We're on track for a great and incredible career. It is a well-deserved honor and really set a standard for excellence that we can all, you know, hope to achieve as our program grows. Maybe the most exciting part besides those honors were our season as a whole, as a team. We doubled the number of wins from our last year qualifying us for the state tournament, which just speaks volumes about our growth and bright future ahead. And, you know, we can't say enough to all of our parents and supporters and the administration for always showing up for us and going the extra mile throughout our season. So, great things for us in the future, and thank you all.
Next up, boys basketball coach Raheem Byram.
Good evening, everyone. Today, we're here to recognize one of our senior guys. He's actually fifth in leading scorer for this year. This year, it started off a little rough. We went 0-7 right out the gate, so I had to restructure some things, implement a couple of programs, and get our guys together. But, the guy that I'm here for today, Tommy Caroma, who was fifth leading scorer, as I said before, he also broke a couple of records with being a guy to score over 1,000 points. This year, he has his 1,000 points. Can you give it up for that? Along with that accolade, Tommy also was the first-team All-White Division. So, as a senior, Tommy left his legacy here at North Brunswick, did a great job. I coached him for four years, awesome young man. Along with our team, a group of awesome young men, we did well, but the future is bright, and we can't look, we look forward to the future, and basketball is gonna be a big deal for us sooner or later. But, thank you, Tommy.
We got Tommy's names going on the banner. We got his name in just recently, so we'll get that all set up. Fifth-time, fifth all-time leading scorer in North Brunswick history. So, congratulations, Tommy. Next up, our girls and boys bowling coach, Coach Amy McCormick. Our girls bowling team were White Division champions this year, so congratulations to the bowling team, that's outstanding. Coach Mahalik is also accompanying Coach McCormick.
Good evening, everyone. Last year, after the boys won a sectional championship and we lost five of our six starters, we were kinda nervous coming into this season, but we did have three boys really step up to the plate. Senior Kevin, come on up. If I gotta be up here, you can too. So, this was Kevin's first year on the team, and he finished with a 1, I don't know, what'd you finish with? 176 average, which is tremendous as a first-year bowler. In addition, he was All-White Division.
Congratulations, Kevin.
And junior Josh Goldenvar, come on up. Alright, Josh has been here a couple of years. This was his first year as a starting varsity player. He finished with a 182 average. This was about a 50-to-60 pin improvement from last year. The amount of work he put in over the summer leading into this season was amazing.
Congrats, Josh.
Good job, good job.
He had a high game of 246 and a high series of 685. He was also named to the White Division team. We have one more sophomore, Joseph Santelucia, he's not here tonight. He made All-White Division and All-Conference with a high game of 289 and a high series of 714.
So, our girls bowling team was small but mighty. We are only seven people strong, but as Mr. Morell said, we managed to win the GMC White Division, so we were really proud of the girls for that. Three of the girls made All-White Division honors, Marina Wright, Alexis Park, and Cadence Grimes. And Cadence Grimes was also named with All-GMC honors, and she had a high game of 203 this season. I'm losing four seniors this year. I'm losing Yara Batista, Naomi Sipot, Alexis Park, as well as Anisha Segal. So, we're gonna kinda be rebuilding next year, but I'm hoping to get some new girls in there, and we'll see what we can do. Thank you.
Next up, we have our boys and girls swimming team, Coach Carrie Anne Ragivas. Our boys swimming team were White Division Sportsmanship Award winners this year. The girls swimming team were the White Division Sportsmanship Award winners as well, and also the overall GMC County Sportsmanship Award winner. I'm sure Coach will talk about this, but I believe that is, one or the other team has won it 12 years in a row. Again, 12 years in a row, our swim team has come back with a sportsmanship award, so congratulations.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say congratulations to all the athletes who are here, and thank you to the support of our community, our families, our Board of Education, for continuing to grow our swim program. So, I would like to call up all of our boys. That is Chris, Phillip, Dylan, Mohit, Anish, and Jaden. I'm gonna start. These boys are our All-White Division champs. We have Phillip scoring points in the 500 Free and the 400 Free at GMCs. Dylan scoring a total of 62 points this year in the 2 medley relay, the 50 Free and the 100 Free, and the 2 Free Relay at GMCs. He also was the award winner for the Raider Award for Excellence Scholarship Award. You could step forward when I call your name. Mohit was 84 points this year. He scored points at GMCs in the 200 medley relay, the 500 Free, the 200 Free Relay. He also was the Raider Swim Award for Leadership. Anish scored 84.75 points. He scored points at GMCs in the 200 medley relay, the 100 breast, and the 100 Free and the 2 Free Relay. And Jaden, he scored points at GMCs in the 2 medley relay, the 2 Free Relay, the 100 Free getting 6, and the 2 Free Relay, scoring 118 total points this year for the Raiders. He is also an All-Division recipient, and he also now holds Top 15 fastest swimmers ever to swim in North Brunswick in the 200 Free, the 200 IM, and the 100 Free. He's pretty high on that board, so he'll remain there for a while, I'm sure. Congratulations, boys. I just wanted to also say that last year, our boys were the first time ever the White Division champs and undefeated for the first time ever in the history of North Brunswick swimming, so it was a huge accomplishment for us. We did graduate 12 seniors for boys and girls, so it's a pretty hard hit, especially when you only have maybe 18 total swimmers, so it's hard to lose 12 total. But, the boys worked so hard, they had a great season, they worked together as a team, and they're a family, so I'm super proud of them. Okay, I'd like to call up all of our girls. Anika, Nayeli, Nia, Lisanki, Vivian, and Sammy. I also wanted to point out that last year, our girls were two years in a row White Division champs and undefeated for two years in a row. So, again, losing 12 girls or 12 total swimmers is a tough feat, but they worked super hard. We have a lot of swimmers who came back winning conference titles, so that's a big deal. Okay, Anika, step forward. Anika scored points in the 200 medley relay, the 500 Free, and the 200 Free, scoring 59 total points for Raiders this year as a freshman. Nayeli swam the 200 Free, the 100 breast, the 400 Free, scoring 62 points for Raiders this year as a freshman. Lisanki is a senior and a captain. She scored points in the 200 medley, 2 Free Relay, 2 Free, and 100 back, scoring 90 points this year. Vivian isn't here. She swam the 2 medley relay, the 500 Free, the 100 back, and the 4 Free, scoring 114 points this year for the girls. And Sammy is a senior and a captain. Sammy's also our division champ, you could step forward. Division champ. She scored points in the 200 medley relay, the 2 IM, scoring fourth overall, 200 Free Relay, and she got second overall in the 100 breast out of the entire county of Middlesex. She also broke a record that we have here in North Brunswick in the 100 breast stroke with a 107.41, scoring 155.75 points for the Raiders. Also, I just wanted to recognize the fact that it's really important to me as a coach. When I came in, I left, I took over for somebody who, you know, his title is on the pool. He owned so many amazing records, and we were so lucky at North Brunswick to have him. So, I tried to just make a goal for myself as a coach, not just to have great swimmers, but to have great people, great kids, great young athletes on our team. And so, the sportsmanship award was something that I really held to my heart that was really important, and this is our 12th year in a row winning the sportsmanship, chosen by the GMC coaches, and it's a really important goal for us to show ourselves at away meets, at home meets, and when we got on the road, it's important that we show the best of the best and that we are. So, 12 years in a row is a big, is a big deal, so I'm just proud of that.
Next up, we will have our boys and girls head wrestling coach, Dave Sally. Coach Sally, his own accolades this year. This is his second year as head coach here in North Brunswick. He is the Blue Division Coach of the Year. He was also the GMC Overall Boys Coach of the Year, which is a tremendous accomplishment, so congratulations. I'm gonna steal some thunder here. The boys wrestling team were Blue Division champions. I don't know how long it's been, Coach, maybe never, first time ever. We had more wins this year than the last 15 years, so congratulations to the boys. And our girls program were the GMC Champions this year, ranked number, as high as number three in the state of New Jersey, so great work.
I'm proud to say that the wrestling program in town is improving with interest and the skill in the wrestling. When I first took over the program, we had about 35, 40 wrestlers on the team. We now have over 120 athletes between both boys, girls, varsity, and JV, and the accolades are starting to come with some of the practice and the hard work the kids are doing. The girls blow me away every year. They get better and better. They work hard, they compete with some of the top teams in the state and some of the big powerhouse wrestling schools across our state. So, I'll start with the girls. Our first one is Melanie Contreras. Melanie is a team captain. She's in her second year of wrestling. She's working on wrestling next year and continuing her wrestling career at a college. She made her all-the-way to the state individual championship in Atlantic City in only her second year of wrestling. Our second wrestler is Gabrielle Roberts. Gabrielle probably has the most experience on the team. She's in her third year of wrestling. She's also a team captain. She earned high school All-American status at the Queen Beast of the East Tournament down in Delaware. She is the first and only two-time region and two-time county champion as a wrestler. She breaks school records year in and year out. She placed sixth in the state individual wrestling tournament, earned herself a banner in the gym. Sofia Rodriguez, who is not here, placed for the first, she is, did she get here? Alright, sorry, Sofia Rodriguez. Sofia is another wrestler who wrestles year-round and crafts her skill. This year, with the hard work over the summer, she was able to make her way to the podium in the county tournament and became a GMC All-Star. Our next wrestler is Melanie Luna Vasquez. Much like, much like Sofia puts time in in the offseason, traveled to Nationals with us down in Virginia Beach last year, and the hard work in the offseason pays off, and that also earned her a second-place finish at the GMC tournament. Our next girl is Rakai Degrasi. Rakai is also a high school All-American, earning her status taking third at the prestigious National Queen Beast of the East Tournament in Delaware. Rakai has won numerous off-of-the-mat awards, like the Never Back Down and the GMC Sportsmanship Awards, for the things that she does off of the mat. She's probably one of the kindest person, people that I've met, and that's something to say in a sport dominated by combat. We're very proud to say that Rakai is going on to wrestle in college next year, and she placed eighth in the state individual tournament. That's, that's it for the girls. As great as the girls are doing, the boys are also doing really well. They're, they're kind of improving every year at the same rate. It's the first year that we have won the division undefeated. We, when I took over the program, boys wrestling was ranked 23rd out of 24 teams in the GMC. We finished year number 10 in the GMC, and this is much to the credit of the boys that are on this list. Jako Luna is our first wrestler. Jako is the epitome of offseason work. He wrestles year-rounds with different clubs across the state, looking to get 100 matches every offseason to improve his skill. This past summer, he went from third place at the JV tournament last year to fourth place at the GMC tournament. Our next wrestler is Antonio Pizza. Pizza is the only wrestler who did, who received the All-Division Award, not at the weight class that he wrestled at all season, which is a testament to his character and how much he's involved with the team, because he gets it at 120 pounds instead of his weight class of 113, as he was bumped up a lot of the times in an effort to help us win something as a team. So, most of the time, Pizza was giving up eight or nine pounds to his opponent and still came out on top, giving him the All-Division at 120 pounds. Our next wrestler is Sean McNulty, someone we look, look forward to what he's gonna do with his career, being he's one of the only freshmen on the list. He's probably going to be our second all-time 100 wins wrestler if he continues down the path he's going down, leaving this season as the only freshman on the team with double-digit wins. Our next wrestler is Sean Cannon. Sean Cannon, over the last couple of years, has really improved himself, finding himself fighting for his, the individual postseason to continue in the third, fourth-place match at districts. He fell a couple of points short, but he does have another year, and we're looking forward to seeing what he does next year in the individual postseason. Next is our captain, Jolden Miranda. Jolden leads on and off the mat when it comes to wrestling. He's somebody who gathers support from the other wrestlers and convinces them to wrestle and craft their skills in the offseason. He definitely lives by my, my famous quote, "There comes a time when winter asks what you do all summer long," and Jolden wrestles all summer, and he gets lots of praise in the room for, for his work in the offseason. Our next wrestler is John Cologne. John Cologne is one of the other wrestlers on the team who placed at the county tournament the last two years. John is also the recipient of the Kindness Council Award, a prestigious award for some of the things he does off the mat, like helping out with the youth program, which is starting to grow, and some of our special needs wrestlers and study halls with the other wrestlers on the team. And that's the status of North Brunswick wrestling.
Thank you.
And last will be our head track coach, Coach Shwan Grimes. While he's coming up, I will announce that Coach Grimes is the Boys Track Division Coach of the Year, as well as the Boys Track GMC Coach of the Year, Overall Coach of the Year. Our Boys Track team, I'm sure Coach will talk to you about this, boys indoor relays, White Division Champion, Boys Indoor Relays GMC Champion, Group Four State Indoor Relay Champions, and the Central Four Sectional State Champions. So, they've done it all this year, our winter track program for the boys, so congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Morell took care of all of it for me, so I'll be very brief, as brief as I can. I can barely read my notes, so I'll have my reading glasses. I'll do the girls first, are the girls here? There's one? Oh, no. So, we have three girls that made All-Conference, it looks like only one is here. I'll start with her, she's making her way up. This is Yadi, this is her fourth year making the appearance up here. She is the second leg on our shuttle, actually the anchor leg on our shuttle hurdle relay, the second leg on our 4x2 and our 4x4. All three are ranked, the 4x2 and 4x4 are ranked number one in the county. The shuttle hurdle was ranked number 12 in the country and went to Nationals, and Yadi has recently been signed by Felicia University to continue her trade on the next level. The other two young ladies aren't here this evening, Kira Setera, she's now the school record holder in the pole vault, went to meet the champions from that, and she's also the third leg on the shuttle hurdles. And Mira Johnson is also All-Conference, she's the third leg on numerous relays and lead leg on the others, and she is currently mulling a couple of different offers. She's narrowing it down between Felicia and Wright University, so we'll update you on that later. Boys, can you come up and just line up in front, 'cause there's like a bunch of y'all. But, please move quickly. You guys have speed. Move, move quickly. Okay, as Mr. Morell said, they, they won a lot of titles this year. I won't bore you by running them back down again, but the Group Four Relay title is the first Group Four level title in school history, so that's something we're actually really proud of right there. Our shuttle hurdle relay, fellas, step forward, the shuttle hurdle relay, step forward. Isaiah Gaston, Tez Grimes, Michael Perry, and Elvin Marte Felice, he's not here, I'm sorry. But, those three guys, they're All-Americans for the shuttle hurdle, they're ranked number two at the country. Three of them are coming back next year, only one of them is a senior, then, and they are the county record holder. For the season, we broke 13 school records, made the all-time county list in 10, I'm sorry, top 10 list in 11 events, and we also have a county record in the 200. Is Jamel over here? I can't tell. Is Jamel there? No, he's not. Okay, you guys can step back, yeah. And the guys that have earned All-Conference, All-Division, Jamel's not here, but I'll just talk about him anyway. He broke, he set the county record in the 200-meter dash, he won the 55-meter dash at the conference level, and he went to meet the champions, and actually went to Nationals to compete in the 60-meter dash. He's also the anchor leg of our 4x200 relay that broke the county record. Unfortunately, Pway got us at the last minute, but we still broke the county record, so it counts in my mind. Next, we have Tez Grimes, you can step forward again. This one's my son. Tez Grimes made All-Conference and All-Division. I know he's probably smirking right now, but All-Conference and All-Division. He's the anchor leg of that shuttle hurdle relay that made All-American. He's also the go-leg on the 4x2 and the 4x4, but he's not just a relay man, he also is a scorer in the 55-meter hurdles, both at conferences and sectionals. Mike, step forward. Mike Perry, he is only a sophomore, but he's the lead leg of that shuttle hurdle relay that's All-American. He's also ranked number two in the county in the 55-meter hurdles, and he battled some injuries this year, which slowed him down, but to be ranked number two against all the seniors as a sophomore with injuries, I can tell you where we're going in the future with this guy. We have another sophomore, Nate Beckley, step forward. You have to say his full name. Nate Beckley is the lead leg of our 4x2 and 4x4. You have to say the full name with Nate, you can't just say his first name. That's the team rule. But Nate is the lead leg on the 4x2 and the 4x4, but much like Tez, he's not just a relay guy, he's actually ranked in the county in the 400. He's actually one of the state's elite 400-meter runners, and again, as a sophomore, we're gonna see him again. He also ran the 400 at Nationals and actually served up there as well, so get ready for big things from him also. Next, we have Blake, Blake Hunter, step forward. Yes, my man Blake. Blake is the go-leg on the 4x4. That 4x4 actually went and got ranked in the state, making it to meet the champions and medal in there as well as go, well, we didn't take it to Nationals, but we could've, but we didn't. But Blake is also a 400, 800-meter runner, so he's very versatile. Why you keep looking back? The crowd's that way. He's a 400, 800-meter runner, actually competed at Nationals, the 400. He's considering offers from a couple of different schools, need one schools right now, so we'll update you later on him as well. Next, we have Anai Hall. Ways are spinning. Mr., Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall defended his state sectional Hydro Title back-to-back. It's only happened two other times in our sections' history, so that's actually pretty profound. But he finished the season at Nationals going 6'8". To put it in perspective, jumping 6'8" is national elite, so almost every college in the country is gonna be calling for this young man very soon, so remember the name, Anai Hall. By the way, Anai is coached by our Mr. Spello over there, looking very dapper. Go ahead, wave your hand, sir. Make sure I'm not missing anybody here. Let me get my pole vaulter, step forward. Kyle and Isaac, step forward, please. Soon enough, Isaac, soon enough. They're, they're like one of the top pole vault duos in the state. They scored every single beat we went to, they're the reigning GMC relay champions, and they're going to do big things. One is a senior, he said he doesn't want to pole vault in college, that's all right, but Kyle's only a junior, and he's the top returning pole vaulter in the state section and county, so look for him moving forward. Our other twin, Isaiah Gaston, he can step forward. He is the go-leg on our shuttle hurdle relay. He's a four-year, four-year letterman, he's a hard worker, he's the definition of dedication and focus. He's the guy that gets it done, he's the leader of the group, and we're gonna miss him, but he's going to take, take his talents to the next level. He hasn't decided what school he's at either, but we have three schools we're deciding on with him as well. Next, we have Jaden Ait, you can step forward, sir. It has been a looong time since we had a distance runner in this school. Jaden's the first distance points we've had in like over a decade, and we dearly needed him, so we're loving him. He's only a sophomore, he's the anchor of the sprint medley relay that went to Nationals, so we're expecting great big things out of him as well. The last All-Division honor where he's not here, he's a thrower. It's been a long time since we had him, it's been like eight years since a thrower made All-Conference, so Redrick Robinson is also an amazing shot putter who's about to do big things. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. My assumption is that one of these guys has my sweatshirt. I mean, state championship sweatshirt for the athletic director, just throwing it out there. Alright, thank you, everybody. All right, thank you, everybody.
Next up, we have Mr. Neller. I'm not far. First of all, I'd like to thank the township high school for its presentation.
Good evening. Before we start our presentation, I do want to take a moment to congratulate all the athletes, winter athletes, for their accomplishments. I want to congratulate Coach Sally and Coach Grimes for their accomplishments. But I also wanted to take a moment to thank the person who's in charge of all of it. On March 21st, we were notified that in a unanimous vote, Shawn Morell was selected as Athletic Director of the Year for Middlesex County for 2024, 2025. What was said about Shawn is that he always provides sound suggestions and recognizes the true value of high school athletics. And I can tell you that in his time as Athletic Director, he is growing our programs, he gives our coaches the opportunities to find success with their teams, and I think you're seeing that with all of our recognitions of both our athletes and our coaches. So Shawn, congratulations, this is a well-deserved recognition. So we have a brief presentation to set up, but first, I don't know if the board is gonna...
Oh, yeah.
And our Raider Robotics team most recently finished their season in the regional tournament, so they would like to show some, a little bit about their robot to our Board of Ed
Qualifiers, qualified for the championship, could have been a little better, but we're in a rebuilding time. What can I say? It's been a long, long season. Thank you, people. And thank you to the superintendent, Mr. Roca, and the school board for allowing us some space at Maple Need where we can train the robot to do some pretty amazing things on its own. We've been working over there on weekends and so forth.
All right, thank you to Team 25, our Raider Robotics team. I would just like to start off tonight by thanking the Board of Education, members of our school community that are here tonight. We always enjoy being able to show off the great things that are happening at MBTHS. First, you got to hear tonight a little bit about our athletes. Now, we would like to show you some of the great things that are taking place in the areas of academics and activities. MBTHS is a very large school. We have almost 1,900 students enrolled in the school this year, so I couldn't run the school on a day-to-day basis without the members of our school leadership team. We have assistant principals and deans on each grade level, grades nine through 12, and then also department supervisors that are both district and school-based supervisors. Without any of them, I could not run the school each day. So I do want to take a moment to recognize them. Some of the academic initiatives that have been going on for a few years that we're very excited about. First of all, we have a STEM Academy that continues to grow. Our STEM Academy has been in place for six years. Students in eighth grade apply to become members of the STEM Academy, and we've had two graduating classes of STEM Academy students who received that distinction on their high school transcript. This year, we have three cohorts for the STEM Academy. Students coming into the high school, both take both engineering and computer science in their first year of high school, and then they decide what path they may be interested in following. In the past few years, we've added a medical careers pathway, so students take courses that could gear them towards a possible major and career in the field of medicine, or they can take engineering, computer science, and starting next year, they can take an environmental science pathway. So we will have a fourth pathway for our STEM Academy students where they can take coursework in environmental science. We also have a business academy for students in grades 10 through 12. Many ninth graders come to the high school and they take our intro to business courses, business computer applications, or they take financial management, and if they think that they might have an interest in the field of business, we encourage them to become part of our business academy. Students in the business academy can take courses in finance, marketing, entertainment, and we try to expose them for possible, again, majors in college and career growth. A few years ago, right before COVID, we partnered with Rutgers University. We were one of the first five schools to participate in what's called their Ruby Program, where three or four times a year, students from the STEM Academy go to Rutgers University, they spend a day at the business school, they work with local businesses, CEOs of companies, and they also work with students at the business school who mentor them on pursuing a major in business in college. As I said, we started off, we were one of the first five schools. We started off with one bus, and now every time we go, we have to send two, because we have so many students every year who want to be part of the Ruby Program. So we're very excited about that. The goal of the Ruby Program is in their senior year, students in that program will apply, and the Rutgers students will assist them to apply to college to major in business. They want them to apply to Rutgers, but they say they can apply wherever they want, they will assist them no matter what. So we're very excited about that program. We have, we were one of the, we are the first school in the state of New Jersey to participate in what's called Geometry and Construction. Geometry and Construction is a program where students take a double period. The first period is geometry, where they learn that traditional math program, but then they have a second double period where they spend that period building. And if you happen to pull into the main parking lot tonight, you may have seen some sheds outside, they are building those sheds. That's part of their curriculum. So the goal of the Geometry and Construction Program is to eventually be able to build homes for Habitat for Humanity, and that's something that we're working towards. Geometry and Construction said, their program said it takes about 10 years to get to that point. We are in year three, and we're already building sheds, so I think it's a good possibility that we will be building homes quicker than we ever imagined. So we're very excited about that program. I think you left, but I do want to mention that Coach Sally, a few years ago, we had a dormant wood shop. We had a longtime teacher retire after 40 years of teaching at our school, and it took us three years to replace him, because it's not easy to find wood shop teachers. Coach Sally started to coach wrestling here, and then he said, "I have experience in construction." And I said, "Do you have a college degree?" And he said, "Yes," and now he is a teacher in our school. And he has really revived the wood shop. So we have sections of woods, and we have geometry and construction, and we're very excited to still give students who want it a hands-on experience and a tool, trade, tools they could learn if they want to go into trades after high school. Finally, we have a dual enrollment program in MBTHS, so over the last few years, we've had 10 courses that students can enroll in while students at MBTHS, they take their coursework at MBTHS, but they can earn college credit. We've had partnerships with Rider University, Kane University, Middlesex College, and next year, we will be partnering with TCNJ, College of New Jersey, and that will allow us to raise the number of courses from 10 to 28 approved courses for college credit. And we'll certainly be sharing that information with your children next year and families, because that's a great opportunity where you can still be enrolled here and earn credits towards when you go to college. Next slide. We're actually, well, yeah, I can say it. You can go forward. One of the things I do want to thank the Board of Ed for is, you know, unfortunately during the time of COVID, we weren't able to go on any trips, take students out on class trips, and we truly believe that besides the classroom, we want to give students experiences outside of the classroom. So the Ruby Program is a great example, where the students go a few times a year to Rutgers, but we've seen over the last few years the support of the Board of Education in increasing the number of class trips that we can utilize every year. So I do want to thank the board, because in the past year, we have had students go overseas. We had our Model UN program, went to Prague in the Czech Republic last year. This year, they went to Madrid in Spain to compete in international competitions. We've had students continuing our German exchange program. For the first time this, in many years, we had students in a Spanish exchange program go overseas this year, and then their Spanish counterparts came to our school in late September and early October. We also had students go, and I'm going to invite our two assistant principals, who are the leaders of this program, Mr. Speller and Mrs. Gamble, to come up to talk about another new opportunity we had this year, which was our HBCCU trip. For the first time, we had a group of students a few weeks ago get to visit historically black colleges and universities in the Northeast, and they're going to come and talk about
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today, tonight. I would like to first ask our team to come forward. Mr. Speller is already here, Ms. Lamar, Ms. Perkins, and Coach Byram. Also, our senior student leaders, Akila, Carson, Dylan, Leah, Malachi, Mamadou, Naomi, Sapphire, Xavier, and our photographer, Javon. We also had two junior student leaders, Alicia and Tez. And all of our students that attended the trip. Come forward, please, that are here. We had a total of 41 students total that attended this trip. On behalf of our team, we would like to express our sincere gratitude for your continued support in making this first annual North Brunswick Township High School Historically Black Colleges and University College Tour a reality. This historical experience was truly a life-changing event for our students, and it wouldn't have been possible without the trust and encouragement of our families. We're asking our families that are here, if you could just stand, we thank you for showing up and supporting. Thank you. Our principal, Mr. Neller, our guidance department under the leadership of Mr. Pharo, all of our administration, all of our staff at the high school, Ms. Roca for supporting us, Ms. Kida, Dr. Johnson, and this board.
Just like to start off by saying, this was a very, very big idea. We came up with a 30,000 square foot view, and then we had to drill down. And the reason that it's possible, and it happened, is because of the leaders that Mrs. Gamble spoke of, but Mrs. Gamble being the leader of the leaders. So I just want to give her and our team over here a round of applause to making it happen. As you can see, we had a very, very ambitious schedule, visiting two schools a day. However, we were determined to give our students something truly meaningful. And because of the careful planning and passion of our team that I just mentioned, the team was able to successfully make this trip happen.
During the tour, students engaged directly with faculty, coaches, and current students of a wide range of historical black colleges and universities. They explored campus life, asked thoughtful questions about academics and activities, and saw firsthand what their future could look like in a college setting. Some of the highlights from the session was Dr. David K. Wilson, who was the president of Morgan State University, that spent his time to speak with them and engage them about the university and also the benefits of going to college, as well as the time that they had spent with the high school, our high school, North Brunswick Township High School alumni that is currently attending these universities.
So as I mentioned before, the big idea came from a personal experience for me. As a senior in high school, I chose my alma mater, North Carolina Central University, because I was on a HBCU tour, and I knew firsthand how impactful this could be for our MBTHS students.
These connections and experiences have inspired our students to help them see themselves as a college-bound scholars, and we are truly grateful for your commitment to expand their opportunities and broaden their horizons. Thank you. And at this time, we would like to share a video of some of our trip highlights put
Yo, Dylan, didn't we just go on like an amazing trip last week?
Yeah, that trip was phenomenal. We had to visit so many different colleges that I wouldn't have visited otherwise.
Right, these HBCUs were incredible, bro. The culture, the space, everything, it was so nice when we visited.
Yeah, it was great. But Mamadou, what was your favorite thing about the camp?
My favorite thing, like, honestly, I have to say, just the experience in total, bro. Like going on the bus, going to the hotels, visiting all these colleges that I've made never have seen before, like, it's crazy. It's such a good experience. What about you?
I think my favorite part was I wanted to go to a lot of these colleges, and this trip gave me the opportunity to actually go and visit them, because it's so far down south.
Not gonna lie, my favorite part of the trip was when we got to finally see Norfolk at night, you know, having to see the student live, and you know, they're in the cafeteria when we're eating, there's like a lot of music and dancing going on, which is a good vibe. Ms. Gamble and the rest of the team got us there, you know?
Yeah, it was a good experience at Norfolk. Honestly, I also really liked Morgan State that morning, like, it might have been more chill in the morning, but it was so nice. Seeing all the buildings, be able to see like the students, see the library, oh, it was so cool down there.
I liked North Carolina A&amp;T, it's actually one of, it was one of my top colleges before this trip, and because of this trip, I'm now officially a North Carolina Aggie. What did you like about North Carolina Central?
What I liked about Central was the deep history it had, you know, one of our assistant principals, Mr. Speller, he went there, you know, he was a frat and everything, you know how that is, and you know, having him and the tour guide come around and show us the campus and the history and kind of provide a backstory of why you should choose Central.
Honestly, Virginia State was so cool to see, especially as it was one of our advisors there, Ms. Perkins, it was her alma mater. Honestly, it was great to see that, like, just to see all the history and the buildings and all the, all the people coming together and speaking to some of the students, especially about engineering.
Howard, it was great. On the drive there, we drove past many historic monuments, like the Lincoln Memorial, the Pentagon, it was a very enlightening experience. And then the college itself, it looked amazing. Howard was also one of my top schools, because it's like the Ivy League of HBCUs.
Before this trip, before we started planning about everything, how much did you know about HBCUs?
I was a nightcap for real, I didn't really, I didn't get to see any other HBCUs or get to, I didn't have that much information, you know, it wasn't there. What about you?
Honestly, before this trip, like, I actually knew nothing about HBCUs. Like, this is, this was my first time being exposed to an HBCU and seeing all the culture and everything that I could possibly be missing out on by not knowing, it's honestly great to see now.
And then North Brunswick, you know, how did North Brunswick play? And then North Brunswick, you know, how did North Brunswick play to that?
Honestly, like, this is the first time that North Brunswick Township High School, like, I think even just North Brunswick in general has done anything like this with an HBCU trip. And I think it's going to be great to show future generations how, like, there's more options than just like a PWI or something like that, where they can, they can just have more options to go to.
It's not just us who enjoyed the experience. One of our other, one of the other people who went on this trip, they said that their favorite part about this trip was when they, we got to these different colleges, they were able to ask, ask the college students how they liked the colleges, what they think about it, would they recommend other people go into this college? And the college students were very open, and they, they told us what they thought about the college, and it helped make decisions easier for people.
So for our juniors, this was such an amazing experience for them too, because they've really got to see these college campuses early. Like, I didn't have, I didn't visit any colleges my junior year. But I got to, they get to visit, visit these six colleges and see a whole bunch of different experiences to see where they want to apply to next year.
It gives North Brunswick a better chance of preparing students for the future, which should be everybody's job, you know, preparing, you know, the young ones, you know, say, college life after school.
This trip as a whole, like even just without the colleges, like, it was also just such a good time to connect and bond with people that I've like never really spoken to before. Other young black students that I've never had a chance to connect with, it really just opened up a whole new world for me.
You know, though, for the students that wanted to do something in their life, in their future, and they wanted to strive for something good, also wanted to go to HBCU, it was good to get to meet them, greet them, and you know, get to enjoy that time.
I meant to put a lot of time and effort into this trip, planning which hotels, planning where we're going to eat, planning where we're, what colleges we were going to go to. And they, because of them, they've made memories that are going to last us a lifetime.
We're going to show you some clips from our trip.
Alright, I do want to, I'm glad to see the great experience the kids had and the way they spoke about it on the video. You know, it really was a great experience for them, and I'm glad they were able to share it through this well-put-together video. Next, I do want to share some of the other recognitions we received. So I'd like to ask Ms. Nudelman, our district director of music, to come forward. We have been recognized, the entire district has been recognized for the last eight years as one of America's best communities for music education. But Ms. Nudelman is going to talk about some additional accolades that we have received this year as a school.
Good evening, everyone. My slideshow is coming up in a second, so we'll get there, but I'm just going to talk about it anyway. As it comes up, you're going to notice that in all the pictures that we've taken, you're going to see a lot of the same faces, which is awesome. So you'll see pictures of the choir, the band, the orchestra, the winter percussion ensemble, which are four of our biggest ensembles that we have here. And it's a lot of the same students, because that's the best thing about this high school, is that regardless of what instrument you play, we never say no. We always are more than welcome to, if you sing, but you want to be in winter percussion, we always say yes. If you play the violin but want to be in the marching band, the answer is always yes. We, we've never ever turned a kid away because they didn't play an instrument. We start kids in ninth grade, 10th grade, all the way up through 12th grade. So that's probably my favorite thing here. Our choir, oh, here it is. So I'm a TCNJ alum, so I was really happy when Mrs. Affleto, who's our new choir teacher here at the high school, she welcomed in Dr. Brandy Diggs, who's the director of vocal studies at the College of New Jersey, for a masterclass with her students to prepare them, not only for their spring concert, but for the first time that the choir is performing at the American Choir Directors Association Competition in May at Rutgers University. Dr. Diggs is incredibly impressive. She's a soloist with the Atlanta Symphony Orchestra and the Atlanta Opera. She's a regular performer at the Kennedy Center, and we got to basically pick her brain on all of her knowledge and expertise that she brought to the students, which is, which is incredible. We have a couple of students who've already committed to TCNJ who want to keep singing. So it was a great experience for, for them to meet Dr. Diggs and get a foot in the door at a program that they're going to be studying in the next four years. The orchestra, who you probably saw playing out in the lobby, under the direction of Mr. Cooper Ford. So they, he brought them to perform at, you can go to the next slide. He brought them to perform at the CGMEA, which is the Central Jersey Music Educators Association Orchestra Festival at Rawaway High School, where they earned a silver ranking for their performance. The Chamber Orchestra and the Select Strings, those are the kids who you saw out in the lobby tonight. They were also featured as an in-house reading ensemble at the NJMEA, the Music Educators Conference down in Atlantic City, under the direction of Dr. Sandra Dackow, who's a basically powerhouse in the orchestra world. She's the head of orchestra at William Patterson University. And the Select Strings also performed a session on the repertoire of diverse conductors and diverse cultures. The Wind Ensemble, okay, the MBTHS Wind Ensemble performed also at the NJMEA Conference in Atlantic City as part of a band reading session, under the direction of also not only Dr. Mr. Jeffrey Smith, but Mr. Isaiah Mason, who's our band director at Linwood. He's on the DEIA Committee for NJMEA. And he helped us get the students involved in performing in a focus on diverse repertoire, where Mr. Smith exposed the students to music of various cultures and composers of all diverse backgrounds. And also, we tried to partner with as many universities as possible, and Rutgers being right up the road, and Mason Gross being one of the biggest music programs in the country. We brought in Dr. Julia Bamanis, who's the assistant director of bands at Rutgers University for a masterclass in, for the Wind Ensemble, right before their performance at their CGMEA Wind Ensemble Festival that we hosted here in March. And for the first time in school history, the Honors Wind Ensemble got a gold ranking and got the highest score of the evening, which we were very proud of them for. And then our Winter Percussion. They, once again, are US Bands state champions for the indoor scholastic stancil. They're led by Joe Scala and Liz Fackelman. They're now two-year defending champions in their division, and we have one more championship competition coming up at the end of April at Jackson Memorial High School. And they're probably going to win again, so we're super proud of them. They're excellent. And then, right before I get to Michael, I'll do a shameless plug here. The Alchemists have their spring musical, Little Shop of Horrors. Yep, that's right, Little Shop of Horrors. It's why I'm terrified of plants, because I saw that movie way too young. It's April 24th, 25th, and 26th, right here in the auditorium. We're very excited to put that on for everybody. And just like how we recognize so many of our incredible athletes tonight, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize sophomore Michael DiNacolo. So Michael, you can, you can come on up. So Michael has distinguished himself as an exceptional musician. He's currently the principal trumpet player of the high school Honors Wind Ensemble. Also, in a remarkable display of talent and dedication, Michael earned, he auditioned for and earned a coveted spot in both the Region Two Wind Ensemble, which is in this like local vicinity up against South Brunswick and JP Stevens in Edison in East Brunswick. He was in the Wind Ensemble of Region Two. And then also auditioned again and made the All-State Wind Ensemble, which for a sophomore is an incredible accomplishment. He outscored tons of juniors and seniors, not only in our region, but also in our state. He had the amazing opportunity of also performing at the NJMEA Conference on the Saturday of our conference, and then that night at NJPAC for the state, which is, which is just truly an incredible thing. And we're very proud of Michael. So having a student of this caliber at such a young age is a rare and exciting distinction for our music program and a true testament to Michael's outstanding musicianship and work ethic. We're so incredibly proud of Michael for his accomplishments and for representing our school and our music program with such excellence. And we look forward to seeing all that he will accomplish for years to come. So congratulations, Michael. And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Mr. Neller.
Our last recognition of the evening. You can see that we have two displays up here. The first display is for the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award, which we received this school year. As I mentioned, MBTHS has a very strong STEM Academy, and I believe that the STEM Academy and those teachers have allowed us to achieve this award. Most people know that traditionally, the field of computer science has been male-dominated. So the College Board recognizes schools across the nation every year who are making efforts to diversify that field by encouraging female students to take AP or computer science courses. Schools that have a greater than 50% female student enrollment in those classes receive this recognition. We were only one of 237 schools in the country that received this recognition for this school year, or for last school year, because we had greater than 50% of students enrolled and our computer science courses were female. So it's something that we're extremely proud of. And at this time, I would like to turn this, the mic over to our STEM Academy coordinators, Mrs. Janine Lanfair, who is our science supervisor, and Mrs. Carol Aluizio, who is our math supervisor.
Thank you. Good evening, MBTHS and honored guests. In the United States, women earn roughly 20% of awarded computer science bachelor's degrees. This number has declined from 35% in the 1980s, despite women currently earning 57% of all bachelor's degrees overall.
Providing female students with access to computer science courses is imperative to ensure gender equity in the field's high-paying, fast-paced jobs and to drive innovation, creativity, and competitiveness. That's why College Board honors schools for expanding access to AP computer science courses for female students in their communities.
I'm going to repeat some of the information that Mr. Neller shared, because I think it bears to be emphasized. Schools receiving the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award have either reached 50% or higher female exam taker representation in one or both of the AP computer science courses, or a percentage of female computer science exam takers that meets or exceeds that of the school's female population.
This year, 1,153 schools were recognized for their work towards equal female representation in computer science. Nationwide, only 237 schools were recognized for creating equal opportunities for female students in Advanced Placement Computer Science A, which is the College Board's Java coding course. North Brunswick Township High School was one of those 237 schools.
While this is the first year North Brunswick received the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for AP Computer Science A, it is the third time we are being recognized for supporting the growth of young women in computer science. In 2020 and 2021, we received this very same award for the AP Computer Science Principles course. That is the College Board course that introduces students to the breadth of the field, including algorithms and the internet.
And if our teachers could come forward? Tonight, we would like to show our appreciation to the North Brunswick Township High School Computer Science teachers, Mrs. Alpa Perohit. She teaches our Computer Science A courses. And Ms. Incia Julia, who teaches AP Computer Science Principles. We thank you for all you do to create computer science classrooms that support and challenge the young women in our community. You show all our female students that it is possible to see yourself in STEM. We appreciate you.
We are also proud to report that as we continue to develop the computer science program at MBTHS, we have been selected by College Board as a pilot school for the AP Career Kickstart Cybersecurity Program. MBTHS is one of only 17 high schools in the state of New Jersey that were selected for this program. We would like to thank the support that we've had in pursuing this new opportunity for our students from the building and administration and the board. We can't wait to see all of the exciting opportunities that this program will bring for our students. Thank you.
And the, thank you, Mrs. Aluizio and Mrs. Lanfair. I do want to end the night by sharing some information that was shared with us back in the fall by the College Board. We had over 100 students recognized in 2023, 2024 as AP Scholars, which means that over 52 stu, or 52 students received scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. We had students recognized as AP Scholars with honors, meaning they scored at least a 3.25. The AP score tests are scored on a scale of five. Three is the metric that the College Board uses for passing. We had over 70% of our students last year receive a three or better on an AP exam. So we had 21 students recognized as AP Scholars with honors. We had 38 students recognized as AP Scholars with distinction, meaning they scored at least a 3.5 on average on three or more exams. But we also have a program at MBTHS, and again, we always try to really get in, you know, when things are getting started. So we were one of the first schools in the state of New Jersey to begin the AP Capstone Diploma Program. Students in their junior and senior year, AP, or STEM Academy students are required, but we do offer sections for students who are just interested in taking those AP classes. Students in their junior and senior year take courses called AP Seminar and AP Research. In those courses, they pick a real-world project, and they develop the project. They test hypotheses, and they put together a presentation that they present and is sent to the College Board to be reviewed. So those students are really learning how to conduct research, and then ultimately to write a paper supporting their findings to submit to the College Board. Students who successfully receive a three or higher on both courses are eligible, what's called, what's called the AP Capstone Diploma, which is a distinction on their transcript. So this past year, we had 21 students receive AP Capstone Diplomas, which is something that, and it was the first time we had had that, and we far exceeded the state average for the percentage of students who received those Capstone Diplomas at their school. So we are very proud of that. We did, of those students, many of them unfortunately were graduates last year. Traditionally, a lot of seniors take AP classes, but we did have 43, 39 juniors, four sophomores last year who received distinctions. So we will be inviting them. For the first time ever, we're going to invite them to Academic Recognition Night in May, and we are going to recognize them for being AP Scholars. So we're very excited about that. Thank you. As a school, we, we've made a commitment that we, we feel that we recognize our athletes, and we're so proud of everything they accomplish, but we do But we do want to do more to recognize the academic scholars in our school, and that's one way we're hoping to do that this coming May. So, with that, I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I hope you have a great evening. Thank you.
Mr. Neller, our presentation here for the evening. Those of you who are still here, our two STEM teachers. We'd like to thank you all for this presentation this evening. We'd like to really let you know our gratitude at all the amazing things that are going on at North Brunswick Township High School. It's clear that, you know, you are creating students who have breadth and are providing them with rigorous programs and giving them opportunities to explore, whether it be in Germany or other countries or going down south to APCU's. All very innovative programs, meeting the needs of students who are beyond construction with STEM programs and getting these distinctions as well. And we need to celebrate even more loudly. So, thank you all. We appreciate it. And any other board members? Can I add a question? Would you like to say something?
There's so much to be had at this school. I know a lot of us up here are graduates, and to see, you know, the programs and everything that has evolved even from when I was just here is incredible. So, you know, you have a wonderful team. Many, you know, I have worked with and have taught me. So, it's definitely an honor to be sitting here and hearing all the great things that this school is accomplishing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We have some business to get to. So, at this time, we will jump to item six. Do we have any new business to discuss? No, okay. So, at this time, we will review our short agenda. The board has received copies prior to. So, we'll start on page four and five. And then we wrap up on page six. So, at this time, we will have a public session on agenda items only. Anyone from the public would like to come up and speak on anything from the agenda. We ask that you state your name, and then you do this. All right, Dana. Can I have a motion to close the public portion of this meeting? All favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Session is closed. Thank you. Vice President James, can you please give your consent?
For my president, I make a motion to approve the closing consent that I have as a Miss of the day's conference.
Do you need a second?
Second.
All right, I'm going to take a vote call here. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. LaGore?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Ms. Tose?
Yes.
And Mr. Wang?
Yes.
All the motions are approved.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will have a public session on anything. Anyone from the public would like to come and address the board. The adjutant speaker, Dana. And we'll begin the process. Dana, can I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, who is second? Mr. LaGore? Thank you, Mr. LaGore. All favor?
Aye.
You want to post? The session is closed. All right. At this time, we will have a motion to adjutant close session where our Section Eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 AL 575, permit this resolution of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. In contrast, public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore being resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education, the public shall be excluded from the discussion of it and action upon it here now for specified subject matters. General nature of this subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Financial matters. It is anticipated that the time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the infernal disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Do you have a motion? I'm sorry.
Inocia James.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Does anyone want to post? We can go into the next session. Thank you. Mr. Mizrael, we're going to stay here. You can have him cut the mic.